I'd like to call to order the Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, June 21, 2017, at 6:00 PM. And all commissioners are here and accounted for with the exception of Commissioner Wickwire, who is absent and excused. There's no public here, so there's not going to be any knowledge and public comments. I don't know if everybody's had time to read the minutes? And if you've had time, entertain a motion?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I'm looking at the minutes from February 22. And it talks about a planner named Chris Sorensen as part of the staff. I don't remember if, is that a guy or a gal? Did they present anything?
Well, he was here as a kind of support-
Okay.
-for that particular aspect of it. He was kind of a, he's one of the development services planners.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the minutes from February 22, 2017, March 22, 2017, April 19, 2017, and April 26, 2017.
Does that second up?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes stand up approved as written. Is there any new business this evening? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing. A proposed code amendment that would make approval of a final plat in administrative process as well as plan amendments addressing comments received from the PSRC. Tonight with staff, we have Bruce Blackburn from Planning. Thanks, Bruce.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. This, of course, is a public hearing to consider two items. One is a potential code amendment regarding a development services initiative or a DSI improvement. Basically, what the city has been doing is it's been trying to come up with ways to make our development review process more efficient and timely so that we don't have to have quite as many delays in getting projects approved. To allow final plats to be an administrative process. The second part is that I wanted to kind of get some feedback from the Commission on some early responses that we've been drafting for the Puget Sound Regional Council comments during the 2015 periodic plan and code update. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take these one at a time, so we're going to start with the final plats, of course. And, of course, final plats are the last action the city takes regarding the processing of a subdivision. A final plat is a state authorized function that is granted to local governments pursuant to the RCW, basically 5817, which is a very famous RCW provision. Once a final plat is approved by the city, the plat document is then recorded with the county assessor's office. This creates the fee simple lots, or the lots which can be legally bought and sold. And that's another very important feature of the RCW. It's at the preliminary subdivision entitlement process. We use the word entitlement process a lot of times because basically what it is, is it's a promise from the city that the preliminary subdivision is approved by the city's hearing examiner at a public hearing. And one of the things you can think about as entitlement is it kind of has a similar vein as a contract that the city has between the city and an applicant, that the applicant can guarantee that if he performs certain provisions, like the standards and the codes, engineering practices, lot layout, lot street layout, and those games, the city will approve a final plat. Now, the preliminary subdivision approval is a public hearing process before the hearing examiner. It is the city's one public hearing that's allowed on a project. One of the provisions that I didn't put a lot of information in here about was the Regulatory Reform Act. And that's basically an RCW 3670B. Remember, 3670A is our growth management act. 3670B is the Regulatory Reform Act. Basically, with a probe back in the late 1990s, early 2000s, to come up with a more systematic way to review project applications. Now, the preliminary subdivision is approved by the hearing examiner, and then what happens is developer prepares construction level permits that includes all the final engineering plans and documents that is necessary for the city to evaluate the improvements. And those, again, primarily streets, sidewalks, utilities, and stormwater facilities and those kinds of things, needed to support the lots within the subdivision. And these are a couple of examples of the type of documentation you get with those final engineering plans. I'm sure Roger Cecil sees these in his sleep. The improvements are then bonded or constructed, they're inspected and accepted, or basically required to be rebuilt, by the Public Works Department's professional engineers and inspectors. We have a whole group of individuals who do nothing but this type of work. Then what happens is the final plat map that depicts what's called meets and bounds of all the lots, tracks, streets, and all required dedications, declarations, and legal descriptions is submitted to the city for a review. And these are, again, a couple of examples of what type of details included in that final plat map. And you couldn't, you can't really see it very well, but each one of these lot lines has a specific bearing and dimension to it. And it's basically very precisely done. And in fact, they actually have some very detailed calculations that are co with that. The final plat map is then essentially a checklist where the improvements, conditions, code requirements are certified or checked off. And that's kind of how we look at it. This is kind of a checkoff by the city's professional staff as being either complete, consistent, or has been accepted by the city. That certification, of course, is done by city staff, who have a lot of technical knowledge and training to evaluate these type of improvements, particularly the inspectors who do a lot of training to learn their craft, as well as, of course, the engineers and the planners who also have a lot of experience. Now, what happens in the final plat, it's a closed record review, and the hearing examiner relies upon the city's staff members to inform him of compliance with the preliminary subdivision requirements during the final plat. The hearing examiner doesn't go out and do his own individual inspection or anything of that nature. Now, right now, the city holds a closed record review before the hearing examiner, who must approve the final plat. Now, this has caused a lot of confusion to surrounding residents and interested parties who receive one more notice, they've already had two or three probably, about a development that they say, well, wait, it's already been approved and it's built, basically. And they get really confused and concerned. Sometimes people come to the final plat closed record review and say, well, we want to raise additional issues about this project. Or we want to challenge some of the preliminary subdivision approval processes. And that's just not the case because the hearing examiner has to frequently inform these folks that this is a closed record review, and there are very severe limitations on that type of review. And it really disappoints a lot of participants. And so this is one of the things that we want to kind of get rid of, is we don't want to have this false expectation occurring with some of our residents. And again, as I identified, this is one of a series of things we're trying to do to improve our development services initiative, basically improve our efficiency for processing applications. And one of the things that we found interesting is the hearing examiner himself is very supportive of going to an administrative process for the final plat. He basically has identified to us that the city of Bothell is one of the very few jurisdictions he knows where he has to approve the final plat. Most of them are done as an administrative process. So tonight, we can, of course, finish our public hearing. We can take public comment. You can have commission questions, some deliberation. And our staff recommendation is, of course, to move to approve and adopt the staff recommended code amendments and the draft planning commission findings, conclusions, and recommendations as a planning commission recommendation for consideration by the city council at a future date. Of course, you have options. And of course, you could do some amendments to the codes or the draft findings and conclusions. Or you could continue the hearing to a date certain and say, well, we'd like you to bring back this information. We don't think that's necessary in this case, but that could be. So that will conclude my presentation. I would turn it back over to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, for that presentation. Are there any commissioners who would like to, are there any questions from the Commission for Bruce with regards to what he just presented or gave to us?
Yeah, thanks, Bruce, for the summary. I guess the question I had when I read through this material and kind of have been familiar with Bothell's process, you know, when we compared to other cities. I guess my question is, it seems like this was a separate, actually a separate type of permit in its own? So it's category 4B, I think?
Yeah, it was a 4B permit.
So it seems to me like this step, this final plat application and hearing was intentionally added to the code. That's what it seems like when you read through this. And so I guess I just wanted to ask the question, was there some reason? I want to make sure we're not missing anything by just striking this thing out. Was there some reason that you were aware of that this was-
Well, I can, and I can give you a little bit of history on this. Essentially, what this is, this is almost a holdover from the days when we used to use lay bodies to make these kind of quasi judicial decisions. And what would happen is that we had a preliminary and a final, and we always brought, as a city, always brought the final back to the planning commission or the city council, depending upon what the process was. And when we switched to the hearing examiner system back in 2001, I think it was, we just kept that same procedure in place. Since that time and now, we've had such huge improvements to our codes and our regulations and our procedures that we just don't have to have that additional review anymore.
And then a couple places in here, it talks about, you know, if we go away from a hearing examiner, it would be a, I think it said a public works director administrative decision.
Yes.
Is that, because to me, I think the community development director has a lot, or that department has a lot to review and make sure that it works from their end, too. Is that, how do we tie that into this?
Well, actually, you identified a really good question we have had internally, and it was, okay, who is the best group to do this? One of the things that we found was that, as we kind of started going through all the staff required steps to approve a final plat, it's primarily in the public works department where most of this happens. The inspectors, the engineers, the review of the provisions. The planning staff has a kind of a somewhat minor role. You know, it's still a coordination issue because we have to do as a final plat now, but is a relatively minor role, is from just our pure code provision because it's lot area, lot dimensions, and some of those items. So it's primarily a public works function. So we thought it would probably be better for serve to have the public works director as the primary lead on this type of approval. Now, given that, the community development director is still required to sign the final plat document. So, as well as, of course, the mayor-
I see.
... and the city clerk and a bunch of other individuals within. So the community development department will certainly be improved, but what we're going to do is we're going to have the lead be the public works director.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my thought on that was that, you know, we have lot dimensions, minimums, we've got now potentially some cluster provisions, and those are generally kind of planning type issues, but I think it makes sense. If you're just saying you're designating someone to be the, kind of the spearhead for it, but everybody still gets pulled in.
Right. Now, and one of the things that we got to keep remembering is that, keep in mind is that this is the final plat. During the preliminary plat, the primary lead is, of course, the community development department, because that's a real entitlement type of item where we actually are doing a lot of evaluation of whether the project should be approved or not. At the final plat stage, it's almost 90% a technical review. So that's kind of why we chose the public works department as the best lead.
So I guess this, maybe I'll make this my last point. This whole concept of a closed record public hearing really, as I read through this, just kind of baffled me. And I guess it kind of pointed to where we're at right now, which is why do we do this? If you can't enter any additional information, then what is there to look at and what is there to discuss? But it sounds like another staff report is introduced, and that's not considered a record. It's, but their hearing examiner still reviews it or looks at it or-
Yes, and in fact, actually, what happens is that a staff report is prepared, but it basically says, this has been taken care of, this has been taken care of, this has been taken care of. And he has a two-page approval letter he has. It's printed out. All he does is initial it in about four or five places, signs it at the end, and hands it over. So from his standpoint, he's looking at the final plat as, it's really not something that has a lot of value from a review from his standpoint.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm reading through this, and to me, it makes total sense to get rid of this. It's just an extra step that, like you said, confuses people. And the one thing I did notice in the proposed code amendment was we've deleted it from the column, the type 4B column, but we probably need to just delete that column as well if there's nothing in it.
You know, I'm thinking, I was thinking about that. Should we just pull that column out or not? And just call the type 4A a type 4? And I guess my thought was, we'll leave it in there, it's blank. It looks kind of silly, but, you know, and there's no doubt about the fact that we're going to be taking another stab at-
I think it's just, it's confusing if you have a column-
It is kind of confusing, yeah.
That'd be my suggestion. I guess other than that-
Now, if the commission's recommendation is to do that, it's very easy to do.
I'll let other people weigh in, but that's all I have.
There are references to type 4As, yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we actually have about four or five locations in the other portion of the code that reference a type 4A application. Now, as you've identified, if you've probably read, that's a site rezone. The city just doesn't do site rezones because they're always tied with a company, it's a plan amendment. But there could be a time in the future when we do need that site rezone process. So I think for now, I think probably the best thing to do is just purely from a staff saving time is leave it.
I had two questions. One of them was the question that Commissioner Cecil asked about the, who should be the approving authority? And I, that makes total sense to me, what you just said. I do want to, one thing I did want to point out also is that, just maybe for the benefit of the other commissioners who may or may not be that familiar with this process, is that the final plat process is kind of, is really only considering whether the conditions of the preliminary plat approval have been met. It doesn't have anything to do with whether you want the project or whether the project should go forward or not. That ship sails when the preliminary plat approval is granted. So this is really just strictly, they look at the specific conditions on that plat. They say, did they meet all of these things? Did they do all the things administratively that they're supposed to do with the city in order to do it? If the answer is yes to all those things, the approval's automatic. So the only, as far as I understand, the only appeal allowed is an appeal as to whether those conditions were met or not. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, that would be a appeal to Superior Court.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I wanted to point that out. The other question I had was, I recall, I think, some discussion about another possibility for, that's related to plat approvals and that kind of thing. And that is that there's been some discussion, I think, about whether or not a short plat should be four or nine lots. And I don't want to bring up a sticky point or anything like that, but is that something that is still potentially on the table? And if so, is it something that would be, would make sense to try to combine with this since we're already kind of messing with the subdivision code? We could do that same process as well?
Well, as a matter of fact, you actually identified something that's kind of interesting because it actually is one of the identified docket items in our DSI improvements to one of those items. The issue is that that's a really complex, code intense review because we've got four lots mentioned within numerous locations, and then the both, the Bothell Municipal Code and our Design and Construction Standards. It's going to be a pretty labor intensive analysis. Okay, find all those places where it says a short plat is four-
Okay.
... and purge those from the code.
Okay, so it's-
I don't think we're quite ready to do that.
There's a lot of, a lot of editing type stuff-
Oh, yes.
-required. It may not be that difficult a decision to come to, but the work involved in revising the code. I just wanted to ask the question because if it was a simple thing, it seems like, you know, maybe we could knock that out. And I think that was identified as a relatively high priority for the docket. Is that right? I don't recall exactly, but is it likely, was that something that was identified for 17 or was it 18?
Oh, 17, I think, right?
Yeah, I think it is. I don't remember exactly where it is on the list, but it's there. And it's one of the DSI initiatives that we would like to work on. If we can do it this year, we will. If it, I think it's one of those that we said, if time allows, we'll do it this year. If not, it'll roll over until 2018.
Okay. I thought, okay, that sounds good. I'm totally in favor of this. I'm in favor of simplifying things that really don't have any reason to be complicated. So I, I'm totally in favor of this. One last thing, Bruce, is this something that, was it your thought coming into this, that this is potentially something that could be completely resolved at a single public hearing or-
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
We can do it.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Has any questions with regards to this? Okay. Bruce, I got maybe one comment or just one small, I don't know, kind of a grammatical thing, just on page nine.
At the code language or the findings?
I'm sorry, on the draft proposal.
Okay, yes.
Line three. It says Director of Public Works. I just don't know if that should be capitalized.
That's a, that's an interesting aspect. Every time we capitalize it, code publishing decapitalizes it.
Oh, really?
So, yes.
I would just make it consistent with code publishing.
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm not familiar with the plat review process very much or completely. So you mentioned when you're, you gave us a great presentation up there, that you said, you know, folks in the community that might be impacted by it are notified like two or three times. So we're, and I know that's not part of this process. I like actually what you've done here, and I'm actually going to be supporting it. But I'm just trying to figure out where along the way people are within 500 feet that are being impacted, where along the lines are things sent out?
You bet. And I can start that right off easily. First of all, is a notice of application.
Okay.
That goes out 28 days after the application is considered complete.
Okay.
And then it has, people has a 21-day review period to talk about it. There's also a SEPA determination that goes out, the Environmental Protection Act of the state, that we have to make a threshold determination whether there's a significant or non-significant impact on the site. That's the second one. The third one is the public hearing for the preliminary plat itself. That goes out, again, to the 500 people within it now. The city has the option of combining some of those. And it doesn't happen very often because we usually aren't sure exactly when we're going to have the public hearing. But sometimes there is situations where you could do a combined notice of application and SEPA determination if you believe the impacts. And I'll give an example, maybe a six lot plat. That's not going to have significant impact. So sometimes we'll do a combined NOA and SEPA notice. But there's always at least two before we have the hearing examiner decision sent to people.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, I mean, I just want to make sure that the, and you just confirmed it, that the public has several, that's mostly impacted by it, has several opportunities to be able to voice their concerns. And lastly, so there's, and I guess essentially what we're doing tonight, like I said, I'm going to be supportive of it, it probably shortens any kind of appeal process so, or might. Tom?
I was going to mention, I didn't mean to interrupt Chairman Velez, but regarding the appeal process, I don't think state law will prohibit Bothell from creating an appeal to the hearing examiner if you want to build that in before it goes to Superior Court. That's not going to cause any conflict. If you think that's something to consider, it would require a separate fee by whomever the appellant is. It could be, you know, it could be any party, of course. But that's, you know, and in some cases, cities would like to keep it within that, within that context rather than go to a court just because a court would be more expensive overall. That would, of course, require us to write additional language into the code, but I think that, that's something that you can think about.
Yeah, and to add on that, it would have to be another closed record review.
Yeah, absolutely.
Couldn't that be another public hearing?
Yeah, it's, these are quasi judicial all the way. They don't get any more technical and more quasi judicial than a final plat.
Okay, great. To not slow it on the process too much, I think I might not be in, I actually am in favor of doing that, but I don't, I think it'd be kind of nice if we, I don't know what the other commissioners feel. Does anybody have any comments on what Tom just said? Questions, ones?
Well, sitting here and weighing that at first blush, my, my first impression is, I think it could be a great idea in the sense that it makes the process more available to people it impacts. Superior Court is kind of a scary, you know, appealing to Superior Court is kind of a scary idea, but if you could have a hearing examiner, I would think would make it more appealing. Would you necessarily have to get legal representation on that? Or could, could you just represent yourself when you go before a hearing examiner on this? When you think of-
You wouldn't have to have legal representation. It would, it would be up to the parties.
See, I think that it would just make it a little more accessible for people. But, but does it get anything in the net process for someone? I don't know that it would if it's closed, so.
It's an option. We're happy with the way it's drafted. That's staff's recommendation. I just wanted to throw that out there as an option.
Okay.
Can I ask, oh, sorry. Could I clarify on that? Because I didn't quite understand what you were talking about. You go ahead and finish, and I'll ask my question.
Well, I have a separate question slash comment on notification. So if you want to stay, if you have something related to this, go.
Yeah, just, it is related to this. The draft findings under proposed actions state an aggrieved party would have the option to file an appeal with the city's hearing examiner. So I thought I heard you say that, I thought I heard you say that was not an option. Are we, is there-
You know, actually, actually, I think that's something that probably should take, be taken out underneath the current draft proposal. I know there was some discussion about doing that internally, and then I think the idea was that if we're going to use the type one activity, we would not use that, that, basically, we wouldn't allow that closed record appeal.
So a typical type one does not have the hearing examiner-
Correct.
... appeal option? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Sorry, go ahead.
No, thank you for doing that. So just a question for staff. In notifying the public, it's been a while since I've seen one of these notices come through my mailbox, decades probably. So I haven't seen how they go out now. But would it be possible, if it's not done, when it's the last hearing that somebody, that, you know, you said we hit three, maybe two hearings that could happen? Would it be possible on the last available hearing to just kind of flag it for John Q. Public to look at it and go, okay, I see the date is April 26. Oh, I see the word last, so that they can give it a little more attention?
And I'm sorry, I obviously didn't state myself very clearly. There's only one public hearing allowed under state law. So there's one public hearing, there are three notifications that go out.
Okay, so one, three notifications that go out with one public-
One public hearing, yes.
And when you say three notifications, you're talking about the signage, something in the mail or in the mail?
I'm talking about, we'll take mail notice, for example, and that's the same with the publication in the newspaper and the mail, and the posting of the site. A notification is sent out when you do receive the application. It's called a notice of application or an NOA. That's the first one that's mailed out. The second one is the SEPA threshold determination. That's the second notice that's sent out. And the third one is the notice of the public hearing. That's the third one that's sent out. So there is three notices sent out. There's not three public hearings. There's only one public hearing.
Does the SEPA have a separate date, though, from the public hearing? Or is this-
No, because what happens is that the SEPA goes out, and there's a timeframe in which you have to comment or appeal the SEPA determination. It's basically 14 days on comment, 21 days on appeal. If there is an appeal received on the SEPA, it has to be combined with the type three action on the preliminary subdivision process.
Gotcha, okay. Okay. I just, you know, hope on when that hearing goes out as a notice, it's constructed in a way that really gets people's attention and it doesn't become buried in looking like previous notices that they've had that they don't pay attention to. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Getting folks to pay attention to the notices is a challenge. I'll be just-
I know, I know, I know. I've, you know, just, the way people approach and dissect tends to just be really broad and general, and I was just trying to think of a way to really flag and get people's attention.
Having sent out several of these notices, I think the process is pretty thorough. We, I just, I just did one, and it's, you know, it's posting of the site, it's the mailing which goes to everybody within 500 feet. And not only that, but if the owner address on the tax rules differs from the street address, you're also obligated to send it to that other address. So you kind of have to sort through, and so you're, you're pretty certain that you're going to get it to the person that is ultimately affected, whether it be a renter or the owner of the property. And so that, that seems pretty thorough. And so that, that seems pretty thorough to me, the, the three notices go out, you know, three, so there's three different types of noticing and they're done three times. It seems, it's pretty thorough.
Okay, so another quick question, how, is it a little three-by-five, is it in a legal envelope, or does it vary?
The public notices-
Oh, like that?
The notice of application is typically an eight-and-a-half by 11, two-sided at least, it might be more pages, and it's the obligation of the applicant to, to send that, to do the mailing and the posting.
Okay, that's changed a little bit. Okay.
And then the city, the city actually does the newspaper publishing, or they coordinate that, but charge the applicant the cost.
Right, right. Yeah, it is a, it's a very detailed description of items that are in the notice of application or the public hearing, and it's all predicated upon state law. State law mandates what will be in that notice, and what we've done is we've duplicated state law within our own regulations, so there's no question about the fact that there's a certain minimal amount of information that will be sent out to each and every property within 500 feet, for example.
I appreciate that level of detail.
Mr. Cecil?
So Bruce, with the, with the notices that we're talking about, the three notices, is there, is public input requested as a part of those notices? In other words, if you get a notice, do you know that, that, that they're looking for your input? Is that part of that notice, or?
Yes, we try to make it very clear that this is your time to comment upon the proposal.
And so any feedback you have, you, you would know either where to send it, or is there a phone number or something you can call, or?
Well, we have, we have multiple ways to-
Okay. So they're, so they're- So you're soliciting feedback from those people within that 500 feet?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll add one other thing to that, sorry. And when they do get feedback, that feedback, in my experience, is, is provided to the applicant, the applicant is expected to address that, to, to provide an answer in writing to those, to those, to that applicant, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. We do send those kinds of comments to the applicant, usually because the applicant has the best opportunity to respond efficiently.
Okay, are there any other further comments on that particular portion of the? So, would you recommend that we actually do these together tonight, or?
Well, I'd like-
Should we do it one, one at a time?
Finish off the final plat if we can, and then we'll go to the PSRC.
I, okay. Yeah, if, I can entertain a motion.
But I'm not exactly sure what the motion should be, is it, is it just stating the recommendation on your, on your report?
If you would like to, yes, that would be sufficient. And remember now, we did have the one topic of whether you want to have an appeal to the hearing examiner or not. If you so desire that, basically it's adding one sentence underneath that section underneath, on page number nine, I think it is.
Okay.
And it'd be very simple to do. So that wouldn't be, that may be one deliberation point you may want to have.
Okay. I, I would make a motion that the Planning Commission recommend the city council adopt the proposed code amendments, which is Exhibit A to these findings, conclusions, and recommendations for, proposed code amendments regarding final plats, becoming administrative approval.
Let's second that. Okay, is there some discussion then on the, on the motion on the floor? And so, if, if I don't hear any discussion, that means we're, we're not going to be adding anything with regards to the appeal to the hearing examiner? Okay. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and take a vote for the approval. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, it passes.
Of course, what we'll do is we'll prepare the final findings, final findings, and we'll have Commissioner Velew sign them for you. The second item on our agenda this evening is Puget Sound Regional Council or P S R C comments on the 2015 comprehensive plan. Now, as we talked about, this is our study session, in 2015, the city updated its comprehensive plan as part of a periodic update, and it's basically the Imagine Bothell comprehensive plan. The state requires the city to do this every eight years. And in October of 2015, the Puget Sound Regional Council staff certified the city's plans as being consistent with both the Growth Management Act and the adopted multi-county planning policies, or NPPs. And basically what that is, is that is their methodology to make sure that our plan follows their provisions for the multi-county planning policies. However, the PSRC staff did identify a number of comments that they want the city to address in future years, and in March of 2017, the council initiated plan amendments to address those comments. Now, the Puget Sound Regional Council is a regional planning agency under federal and state law, they have a bunch of responsibilities, they make decisions regarding transportation planning, that's their primary responsibility, economic development and growth management, of course. It's 80 member entities from the counties of King, Snohomish, Kitsap, and Pierce Counties, and it serves kind of as a regional forum where these types of decisions are made about transportation, growth management, and economic development across all four of those counties. There's a lot of people in the membership, I'm not going to go too much into that, but basically I just want to emphasize the region-wide policy effort that PSRC addresses. Among those are multi-county planning policies, which go into county-wide planning policies, which are then taken to the city, local jurisdictions for their implementation, and essentially what happens is Bothell is assigned certain growth targets by King and Snohomish County through some very specific processes for the portions of the city within each of those counties. So we address things from King County and we address things from Snohomish County. And then, of course, it's the city's responsibility to craft comprehensive plan policies and a land use map that meets those growth targets. This is kind of a recap of the planning area and our, our population capacity in the plan, as well as, of course, our employment capacity, and you can see that we actually did project it out to 2035, which is one of the comments that PSRC had, so I'm going to get in a little bit of that into there, too. And again, I just want to emphasize that PSRC takes a kind of a regional viewpoint towards growth, and so they really are kind of focusing on, okay, what is your part, City of Bothell and Maiden, meaning our overall growth targets here's. And there's a bunch of provisions that they have identified that I kind of put into this matrix that I put up on the table, and this is the one I sent out on Monday, and then, of course, yellow is the things that we've identified. We have, as a staff, have looked at a lot of the comments from PSRC, and we're going to suggest that they get some better reading glasses, because we actually did many of these things in the plan that they have just missed, and I know that's a kind of silly way to put it, but we're like, okay, guys, did you look at this section, and did you look at this section? So, we're working with them on that, and they've, they've kind of said, yes, we're willing to take a look at those items. The one area that I think that we may have some issues with, and we may want to address is, of course, transportation, want to take some of their multimodal policies, and primarily what PSRC is after is they want to move people and goods, not just vehicles, and they also want to do a lot more concurrency analysis on pedestrian bikes and other methods of population, I'm sorry, of, of transportation movement, and that's something that we're probably going to have to take some time and look at in more detail. I have a meeting with our transportation people, and we've had to miss it a couple of times because of some emergency things, but we're actually kind of working on that a little bit. And PSRC had some really good comments, and I think that they're on point, that we need to do a some tickle, and this is just, you know, this is just, the yellow is just kind of our, our initial read on that. We're going to probably have some more discussion with you later on, actually, I think we've got this scheduled for sometime in July, I don't recall what the date is. One of the other items, we think we have identified some issues, is that PSRC is emphasizing this healthy living style type of an approach, and we do think we have some policies within not just the land use element, but also our housing and human services element that could do some, a little more beefiness to them, maybe even add a couple of things. And you can see the underlying sections there are basically three, is that three? Yeah, there's three new policies that we think that would really address what they're looking for, and it's, a lot of it has to do with healthy food, healthy housing, and all those kind of things, and those are pretty simple. I went in and did the famous planning aspect, and I stole some great language from some other cities and, and, you know, kind of made into the city of Bothell's works, and so, you know, we all, we all do that. So, but anyway, the idea is that, you know, I think this is some pretty good stuff that we could go pretty easily. And then, of course, we're going to have to do a lot of work on the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center, that was one of the other focuses they had. Primarily, they really wanted us to emphasize that area. Well, we've entered into a two-year major planning effort on that item, so you can't get much more responsive than that as far as a near-term solution. In fact, you'll be getting a lot into this this year, as a matter of fact. So, yeah, that's, that's another area where we're going to have this ability to talk with them. We've actually worked with PSRC staff, had a couple of meetings with them, and said, yeah, you guys are going to be part of this, and said, yeah, we make us part of this. So that part is addressed there. So really, I think the big thing was going to be, you can see most of it, you know, was, but the plan passes muster very easily. So really, it's going to primarily be the transportation element and how much data we have for this multimodal, split mode kind of an approach versus what we have in our existing transportation policies, and that's something that we're just going to have to take a real fine-tooth comb and kind of go through. So I'm going to finish my comments there, and, oh, I have a map of the Canyon Park Regional Growth Center. Anyway, so, and just, you know, see if the commission's got any comments on it. Maybe the one thing I think maybe you may want to do is you may want to take a little bit of some of the, the new policies that I've kind of recommended here, just as a kind of a first blush, we can make lots of changes there, but that's all I have for this item, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Commissioners have any comments or questions? Mr. Cape?
Thanks, Bruce. As we reviewed in our study session, it seemed like a lot of these items were covered, and they just either missed them or maybe didn't dig deep enough. One quick question, it's just a small technicality. Number five, which was the Vision 2040 paragraph, the bottom highlight talks about the initial analysis indicates that there do exist policies and actions which will partially address these comments as identified below, and there's nothing included below. Is that something we're still working on, or is there other text I'm missing?
Yeah, I probably should have said I benefited above, because in number two, I actually identified the pages in the comprehensive plan where we actually did address that. So I may have gotten my, my directions mixed up there, but it should actually probably be below. And this is also part of the transportation stuff. We were hoping to be further along than we are at, at this time, we just, you know, it's just, you know, the dreaded staff, stuff going on, so you'll be getting some more information on that here pretty soon.
Okay, and you think, you think the next time we look at it, transportation will have a chance to weigh in and we should be able to-
Yes.
Kind of approve it and pass it back to PSRC?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. We'll be very close.
Commissioner Jones?
Just a quick question, looking at the first edit that we got that, on Friday, and then a little bit here that there's tables and charts referred to, are those something that we need to see, or is it good to know that they're just, that you're referencing them?
For the study session, I provided you the entire land use element and the transportation element and those things, and in this, I actually make some references to some of the tables, I believe, or some of the pages here, too. I am more than happy to pull those out and send those to you. In fact, this is basically from the, the tables within the land use element, talk about our capacities.
Okay. You know, if it's redundant and it's not something that we really, I mean, it's good to have that, it's not a huge tome that you'd be printing off for us, that would be great, but-
We could do something like that.
But if it's, if all we need to know is that it's referencing a specific citation, I'm, I'm good with that as well.
I'm more than, I say, you know what, maybe that's probably a good idea to pull out those sections that we believe have been responsive to the PSRC comments and get those to the camp, we'll, we'll make sure and do that. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thanks, Bruce. Does anybody, oh, Mr. Cecil?
Yeah, Bruce, I just kind of, looking at this table, I just have a, I guess it's more of a curiosity question. These two columns under Snohomish County, the MOOGA update in 2004, and then in future update? So UGA's were, were amended or expanded in 2004, is that correct?
Yes, we did a little bit of a boundary change between the city of Mill Creek and, and then we did a subsequent one in 2010 with the city of Briar.
Okay, so those are really just moving boundaries back and forth between jurisdictions?
Oh, oh, good question, yeah, I'm sorry. It's not changing the urban growth boundary at all, it's just the boundaries between jurisdictions of where they think a logical city limit would be.
Okay.
Sorry about that, yeah.
So this is, I guess, more curiosity, so is there, I've just heard from time to time that eventually the UGA is going to have to move out again, you know? Is that something that you run across or know about, or is there a particular timeline on that? Does it, does it happen every 20 years, or, or can you make any comment on that?
I, I, I think here's how I'll respond. That's usually a topic that's brought up whenever you have a periodic, periodic update, and there's a lot of really clear steps within the Growth Management Act that a county has to follow before they start moving that boundary, and there's, I mean, innovative land use techniques, more internal development, and all those kind of things that have to go through, so it's, it's quite a process, and that would be a multi-year type of an approach to do something like that. I, I hear the same thing rumors you did, well, they're going to have to move that boundary because we're getting filled up in these areas, and, and I don't know if that's a statement that PSRC would support.
Well, I'm, I, that's, that's sort of a regional question, it's not solely a local-
Right.
-jurisdictional question, and as I have been participating in the Snohomish County Planning Advisory Committee to the Snohomish Tomorrow Plan, we, we've actually started talking about this very issue, and we haven't, we, we've had one meeting on it, one separate subcommittee meeting, we've got another one coming up on July 6th, and we're just barely scratching, kind of scratching the surface of, of that question. It's, and, and ultimately, how that would be defined is through the regional strategy policies of Snohomish County. Since we're, you know, in King County, you know, our jurisdiction coincides with other cities, it's really a Snohomish County item. So it's, it's being discussed. A couple of other things that are related to that are how, how do, how do we accommodate infrastructure within that boundary? How's that, how's that going to be evaluated in the future? How should annexations be triggered, or how should annexations be managed? Is there a toolbox for managing annexations and how those should take place? Some of the things that, and Bruce is correct, some of the things that impact all of that is, is how much infill, how, how much redevelopment, what are, you know, what the forecast is for population and employment to the municipalities in the region. So we're starting to have these discussions at the county level with all the cities, which ultimately would then, when we come up with some recommendations or some options, those would go back to PSRC from Snohomish County. We, we still have capacity within our MOOGA to expand the boundary. From time to time, I get calls from citizens who, who are interested in circulating a petition. So far, I haven't really found that there's a really strong grassroots effort out there for a boundary expansion, but there is, there are some ongoing discussions among citizens.
Thank you, guys. Are there any other commissioners who have any comments with regards to what planning has brought us this evening? All right, with that, I guess we'll go ahead and, does anybody have, can somebody give me a motion with regards to continuance?
And staff recommend July 19th.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding plan amendments to address PSRC recommendations for further work on the 2015 periodic update study session to July 19th, is that what you said? July 19th, is that what you said?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's continued to July 19th. There's no study session this evening, any old business?
No, I can give you some updates from City Council if you'd like.
That'd be great, thanks.
The City Council last night decided to move forward with a funding option for acquisition of, of the remaining portion of the Wayne Golf Course and asked for a specific financial plan. The strategy is to, the primary strategy is to come back with a councilmatic general obligation bond for the city share, while you were there. So that, a couple of county, a couple of commissioners were there, but, so that, that is going to move forward. We were talking today at, at the executive level of bringing that back sometime in September. We don't have a, a specific date yet for it, but that'll come back. And we did open up a discussion on downtown parking, which will be on July 11th, that, for consideration to change the parking standards for downtown. Feedback from the council indicated that they would like to go a little, a little more than what our consultants have recommended in terms of a medium level of parking standards. So we've got a little bit of work to do to find, find the sweet spot there, but I think we'll be able to find something that works. And clustering is coming back to City Council also on the 11th.
July 11th.
July 11th. And the City Council is, is going to separate clustering from tree retention, or they have separated clustering from tree retention. So only clustering is coming back on the 11th. Tree retention is, is deferred until sometime after the August break. We, we don't have a date for that yet.
Can I ask a quick question about that? How, how does that affect our recommendation? Because they were, they were part of the same recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially what we have to do, we have to basically pull the Planning Commission's recommendation on tree retention out of the findings and just have the recommendation on the, the clustering. And one of the things we were pretty careful about doing is that we were pretty careful to make sure that we actually did have findings that were specific to clustering and specific to tree retention, so that you could kind, it was basically a way to track it easier. But in this case, it makes it kind of easy, because it's okay, finding number 15, we'll pull out and it'll be findings number 20 and 18 and 19, whatever happened to be the numbers. So it'll be, basically just be that portion. And of course, with the code amendment itself, it's Title 1102, which is a couple of changes, and then Chapter 1230, which is the PUD, and those can stand alone.
Let me add to that. I don't think that, that the council's concern is so much with the Planning Commission's recommendation is as it is, as their concern is having a little more citizen input. And I think they also want to know what the cost is, or what the cost might be in terms of a hypo, more hypothetical development scenarios and how that, and how that relates to tree retention. The home builders have weighed in since your, since your public hearings on the issue. So they have, they have some of their own interests. They, their, you know, their, their arguments are 20% is, is somewhat high in their book. They're pointing, they're pointing us to Snohomish County's code. We're a little reluctant to go in that direction as staff, but, so we're, I don't know whether the City Council wants a more elaborate look at tree retention and whether they'll want to try and tackle that themselves, or just refer it back to the Planning Commission. And it might not be, you know, it might not be a bad idea to send it back to the Planning Commission and get some additional public engagement at some point, but, so we'll keep, you know, we'll keep you posted and monitor that and figure out where, where it's going.
Great, Tom, thanks for the update. Oh, that's, that's interesting stuff.
Yeah.
Let's see, let's see here. And then, any reports from members?
Not directly impacting, but just a point of interest for Planning Commission. I'm on the, as a neighbor, representing our neighborhood for the Traffic Advisory Committee with the University of Washington, Cascadia, and City of Bothell. And they're going to be putting in a crosswalk near the fire station, a signal crosswalk on the fire, near the fire station crossing Beardsley.
That is fantastic. That, yeah, couldn't come soon enough. That's, that's good news.
Do you want to date on that?
Oh, no, no, that's okay.
Well, it's just, should be, I think they're planning on having that up and going by October.
Great. It's good news. A lot of people cross that road.
I'll just say, as I mentioned previously, I will be unable to attend the Planning Commission meeting next week on the 28th.
Okay.
I'll be out next week as well. So I just want to make sure we have a quorum. I don't know about David, but-
Okay. Does everybody else think they can be there at this point? Okay. Looks like it. At least, I think, four of us up here and hopefully David. Let's see, I, I have a quick report. I haven't reported on it before at the other times that I've met with regards to the housing strategy meetings, because a lot of our meetings go, can go kind of late. So just really briefly, I was really, I was thankful to be able to sit in the Chamber of Commerce with regards to the Business Advocacy Committee. And we got a presentation from Snohomish PUD, which is really interesting with regards to the status of where they are with regards to representing the area in Snohomish County. There was, there was people from all different groups there, from the salon at the Village, at the Village, to the new PCC, to, or some of the, you weren't there, it was Dave. So anyway, it was great to have, there was a citizen there from Bothell, citizen advocate. There were a lot of people, there was, let's see, Puget Sound Energy, Snohomish PUD. The leader of the meeting was from UDeb Bothell, Kelly Snyder. And it was really great, it was great to hear back from them. It was, what I heard was, wasn't a surprise, it was kind of what I've heard in a lot of these other meetings with regards to housing availability and what they wanted. It was, it was interesting, it was kind of all across the board, but basically, in a nutshell, it's the same thing that we all know, is people are, just aren't able to find housing in close to Bothell. So they have to, either affordable or, in the affordable range, or just even finding housing, and they come in from all over. And I think that's probably the same for many cities around us, so it was good to be able to sit in on that. I don't know if there, do you know, Bruce, if, if Arch has any other ones planned? Or are we at the 28th meeting, is, are we going to try to wrap it up that night? Is that what the hope is? With regards to the housing strategy?
If possible. I do know that we have reserved July 12th as a fallback date if necessary.
Oh, yeah, I see that, that's right.
Yeah, so.
Okay, great. So that's my report. Any others? Okay, with that, can entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.